Okay, this time tonight we do have a public hearing on a couple of items on some additions to our ordinances. This first one here, this would be our second hearing on this. This is item number one, ordinance number O-04-20, an ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding land development to adopt documents by reference. This is the second hearing. This is pretty straightforward and simple. We use the International Building Code standards, and this is just to adopt the latest versions of those books or those standards. And so, under that section, 34-2 of our code section, we have item number A, which is the International Building Codes, item B, which is the International Energy Conservation Code, C is the International Residential Code, and D is the National Electric Code. Again, these are all existing codes that we have, that's been adopted by the county for many, many years. This is just to bring in the latest versions of those, and also puts the language in here as annual versions, or however they do those come out in the future. We won't have to go through this. It will just supersede whatever the latest book is. So, is there any questions or comments or concerns about this change in ordinance to get these latest versions of these codes, books, updated? Okay, hearing none. Item number two in our public hearing, ordinance number O-05-20, an ordinance to amend Chapter 23 of the Code of the Walker County, Georgia to adopt state codes pertaining to the regulation of fireworks. And this is the first hearing, then we'll have another hearing in two weeks. So, this is something that we have been requested to do. So, our Fire Chief Blake Hodge is here with us tonight, and this is one of the things that come to him, and I've asked him if he would speak about this tonight to give additional explanation to this. So...
Thank you, Commissioner. So, the last six months, we've had several people contact us asking what the requirements would be to operate a temporary fireworks stand in the county at a couple of different locations. We also, keep in mind, the Fire Department also covers the city of Chickamauga as far as fire protection. So, some of the requests or inquiries were out of the city of Chickamauga. We do currently have a couple in, there's been some at Walmart in the city of Lafayette, and that would fall under the city government. But, this is new. It came about, and it was worked on at the state in 15 and 16, and approved, and it's just coming to Walker County. It's been something new that people are interested in, that we don't have a process or a permit for. So, that's why we're here, is to work through and develop a process. We can permit, so we can allow people to establish these temporary stands and bring things into the county. People are gonna go buy fireworks, and if we can, you know, if we have the, can provide that opportunity, they're gonna have it in our county. So, what we've worked on under Title 25 OCGA, 2510-5.1, is the requirements for issuance of license to distribute consumer fireworks, and it explains what you have to do. And this is, again, it's not a brick-and-mortar retail. They have to, those entities have to apply through the state. This is a temporary, small fireworks stand that requires, still requires the distributor to have insurance, a $20,000 insurance policy, requires that they pay the application slash permit fee of $500 to the local authority having jurisdiction, should be the county government or the Fire Department that's permitting it. And that is good for one year. There's a date disclosed in the code that if it was, if they were wanting to renew it for any reason, it would, they'd do another application and permit. So, we just, we wanna offer this, we wanna follow Georgia code and do it the right way. It's simply not existed, so that's why we're here tonight, to get this started.
Okay. Thank you for that, and the work that you've done on this. And David Gottlieb, our county attorney, is anything additional that you would like to add to this?
The only other provision, and we don't wanna get too deep in the woods, in the weeds about this, but they, if you operate a temporary stand, you also have to have a license to have operated a brick-and-mortar. Now, there are two types of brick-and-mortars that you could have. One is the, all they sell are fireworks, or, for example, a store that has a small percentage of their business that does fireworks. For example, Walmart seasonally does fireworks, and they qualify as that second type of brick-and-mortar. So, you have to have a license for one of those two, in addition to applying for a temporary. And of course, the concern is, we, you know, fireworks are very American, but they're also dangerous. We wanna make sure that we're, everybody's in compliance with the law, so that's really...
So, in essence, we're not making any changes, or this is not something we've just thought up. We're just actually adopting this state code that they've laid out.
Right. We haven't added any requirements, other than the minimum what the state requires. Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any questions, concerns, comments from anyone on this tonight? Okay, hearing none. We will move forward with our regular scheduled agenda. We'll close out our public hearing time on these items. Still Thursday, November the 19th, it is 6:08 PM, so we'll move into our regular scheduled meeting. We do have our agenda and our minutes from our previous meeting, which was just last week, so we have in the packets that are provided at the table, and also online on our website, is the minutes of the scheduled public hearing back on November the 12th. So, are there any questions, concerns, or corrections with those minutes from the public hearing on the 12th? Hearing none, we'll sign those into the record. Okay, then we had our regular scheduled meeting on the 12th, and you have the minutes as well in the packet. So, is there any questions or concerns on that? Hearing none, we'll sign those into the record. Okay, our first item of business that we have is the ordinance number O-0420, an ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the Code of Walker County regarding the land development. And, let's see if I got it put in behind, yeah, I've got it put in behind this one, so we'll get it arranged in here. So, this is where we are adopting the latest book of the International Building Code, International Energy Conservation Code, and International Residential Code, and the National Electric Code. So, I will sign this ordinance into the record. Well, ordinance documents have to be attested by the clerk. Let's carry to do that. And then, we have our next item of business is item number two, which is the fire service agreement between the Walker County Fire Rescue and the Catoosa County Fire Department provisions of the automatic aid on certain county roads. So, again, I've asked Chief Hodge to come forward tonight. He has put a lot of work and time and effort into this, and it brings a great value to our county, and I wanted him to come and explain and give some background about this, and how this is gonna help the county going forward.
Thank you again, Commissioner. So, there's two types of aid provided in the fire service. One is mutual aid. That is when we have the need, when we are, when our resources are depleted, we have the need to then call for assistance. And we're part of the Tri-State Mutual Aid Association, which is an organization that provides that resource, and we are a part of that naturally, and through an agreement that's been around for a long time. Automatic aid is when we don't have to make the request. It's when it's built in to the 911 CAD system, when an address is keyed in, the automatic aid agencies, such as in this case, Catoosa County, would be coming to assist us if it's in Walker County, because they are in a closer proximity to the incident than maybe our second or third fire station or engine company, fire truck, coming to respond. And it reciprocates back. We would go and help them when they have certain types of calls. And the calls that we're looking at are building fires, structure fires, bigger type fires, such as residential dwelling, commercial fire. And, so, these automatic aid agreements have existed for a while. We've had an automatic aid agreement with Catoosa. If you remember, a few months ago, we staffed 24 hours a day. We staffed Station 7 in Fairview, and that gave us a better capability to work with Catoosa County in a close proximity to the city of Fort Worth there, with a better automatic aid agreement than existed before. So, back in December of 19, the fire service over there was consolidated, and the county took over the city of Fort Worth, so it became one. And it keeps us in one agreement. We're updating and renewing this today, is what we're doing. So, how does automatic aid help the citizens? How does it help the Fire Department? Naturally, we are requesting automatically, we're getting more resources, which provides more firefighters on the scene with a quicker response time. So, the very, the very idea of safety comes first to mind, that the more firefighters we have, the safer it is. We have a very large county, we have a limited number of firefighters, and it's, it is hard to get safety coordinated quickly on the fire ground. This helps that, when they, when they come, when the automatic aid brings more resources in. So, when you're looking, so, safety first, and we're looking at helping the firefighters. Then, let's talk about, how does it help, in Walker County, how does it help a homeowner with their insurance premium? Insurance premiums are established based on the Insurance Service Office rating, which is provided through the Fire Department, your water authorities, your 911 center, and then a few little bonus points in fire prevention, education, and investigation. And, I'm very happy to say, currently, we're a 3/3Y, which a 1 is the best you can have as far as ISO rating in Walker County. We're very proud of that, but we have to protect that rating, because we don't have the financial means to staff every station. So, we're trying to look at how we can better responses and bring in better resources to help shore up this grade that we have, so we can keep insurance premiums as low as they are. So, we do this. An example would be, if we have an area that is not covered in a, within five miles of a fire station, then if we have an automatic aid agreement with a neighboring department, and they are, that particular station is within that five miles, that homeowner hypothetically would get our rating of the three. That department may have a rating, it may be a volunteer station only, and they may have, they may have a rating of a six, but that homeowner in our county would receive ours, as long as they're within five miles of that station that has automatic aid. We do have pockets in the county that are not covered within that five-mile radius. We're continually looking at it. If you're referencing Macklemore, the development on the mountain, they're nine and a half miles from a fire station. So, we are hopefully looking forward to seeing that development come through in the future, and that fire station goes up and running there, that's gonna help a lot of people in that community. Right now, we have no real means of automatic aid right there that can get, that can get those in, so we're gonna, that's gonna fill a big void. That's one of our bigger voids, but we have little pockets that these automatic aids help. So, that's how it helps for your insurance premium on the side of those that don't, those that don't live within five miles of our fire station, but they may be close enough to another. The other side of this with ISO, and keeping our premiums low, our rating, our score as low as we can get it, is that when you have the ability to have your county covered entirely with an automatic aid agreement, which we do naturally with the prison, we, the prison responds to every structural fire in our county, so we get credit for any and all automatic aid personnel that we can accumulate in the county. It will go on our final score as far as personnel goes, which is the major, it's the hardest thing to get. Naturally, they go by response times, and they go by number of people. Well, it takes more people to have better response times when you have 18 fire stations. So, the side of the, of automatic aid that, besides safety, besides those little pockets, is that we are fortunate enough, with the prison being in the county, to naturally have our entire county covered, because they respond to every fire. So, any automatic aid agreement we can shore up and design and develop, it helps us getting credit for personnel that we just, we don't have. Now, again, we're returning that, reciprocating back to the other entities, but we're on a really good receiving end of that, and we need all the little bitty points, you know, little bitty credits and points add up in this evaluation. There's so much that goes into it. So, I'm excited today to be here, to enter into a new agreement with Catoosa County. Some people are gonna ask, you know, this thing's thick, they're gonna ask, why in the world are there 150, hypothetically, 150 roads in Catoosa and only 75 in Walker County? Well, keep in mind that it's, it's a, we are entering into the city of Fort Worth, where there are a lot of streets, a lot of small numerical, you know, address 1 through 50, where we have a four-mile stretch of road that they're coming into in Walker County. So, but to give you some numbers on actual building fires that have occurred this year from January 1 to date, what the territory we're gonna be in in Catoosa, they've, they've had around, I think it was 14 building fires they've had. We've had 22 in Walker County. So, when you start looking at how it's going to, and 12 of those were in the Fair, in the Fairview area just this year alone, because it's the most populated. So, this type of agreement where we're helping, and Catoosa County staffs all their stations with a minimum of three. We staff ours with a minimum of two. Now, what we do in the automatic aid agreements is we try to send two chief officers as well, because we're trying to send four people, and that's, without getting too far in the weeds with the mathematical formulas of ISO, we wanna try to send four people, we wanna try to receive four people at a minimum. That's the goal. The automatic aid agreements we have with volunteer stations, volunteer departments, it takes three volunteers to equal one career, as far as the mathematical value in the Insurance Service Office rating. So, it takes a lot of volunteers to show up, to really gain that credit. So, that's why, when we look at being able to get in our heavily concentrated area where we have a lot of fires, we really need all the help we can get. That's why we concentrate on, you know, with Catoosa County, on doing this agreement. We're in constant conversation with other municipalities and other organizations, that we really need to do the same thing and renew and update, but it's, it takes a little, it takes a little time to do it, and because you gotta get it all, you know, we get this adopted, it's gotta go into the CAD system to be dispatched. So, that's why it's gonna be a January 1 start. Naturally, if we need their help, we just get on the radio now, and it'd be mutual aid. But, that automatic aid is more than, it's safety first, in my eyes, as the Fire Chief or the firefighters and the homeowners that may be trapped in a house, and the quick response. But, the other side of it is, and where we see a huge impact across the board, is the fact that it is really important to have as much credit for your Insurance Service Office rating, for your premiums to be as low as they can, you know, to provide, to provide that for the citizens of Walker County and Catoosa, or whoever we're in agreements with. So, I'll answer any questions or anything that I might could...
Yeah, one thing to, just to add to this, bring people's attention to page six of the document, and it does spell out the term of the agreement, and it says terms and fees, and it says, "The term of the agreement shall be for a period of two years, beginning on January 1 of 2021 and continuing through December 31 of 2022, unless terminated sooner pursuant to the outcalls provisions set forth in Section 8 of the agreement. During the term, no fee will be paid by either party to the other for fire services rendered pursuant to this agreement. At the end of the term of the agreement, December 31, 2022, the parties further agree, this agreement shall be automatically renewed for an additional 12 months, you know, 12-month term, consistent with the provisions of the agreement, unless the parties provide 90-day prior notice that desire not to renew this agreement." So, I wanted to point out, there's no money being exchanged. This is a benefit to both counties. We have a great working relationship with the folks over in Catoosa County and the leadership of their Fire Department, and it's a team effort here. We did a like, or similar agreement to this back, I believe, at the end of 2017 with Whitfield County. We actually added, as one of our full-time stations, the East Amurchy Community Fire Station, added full-time staff there. Whitfield County has a station not too far across the Whitfield County line. We did the same thing, and that's worked out really well, because we were, had a long response time. Our response times were a lot longer than they needed to be, and so, putting career staff there and with the automatic aids made a huge difference. So, as Chief Hodge says, anytime we can work with surrounding communities and form a, as much of a balance as we can, as far as number of personnel, equipment, and do these things, it's a phenomenal way to work together in your communities. So, very excited about this. Thank you for all the time and work you've put into this, and also Chief Randy Kemp over in Catoosa. So, yes, sir, we have a question?
Yes, sir, Chief. I commend you. I think you're doing a great job, and what all I've heard about your activities. I have a question. I live on Bronco Road, and I'm, we moved here in 1992, and county water had just been put in right on our road. And at that time, you had to purchase a certificate, $35 they were charging. And they said, you know, if you don't get this certificate, we don't have to come and treat your... The nearest fire plug that I knew about was way on down on the spur there, over the hill, and I had farm bureau insurance, and they were rating me extra for a distant fire plug.
Yes, sir.
Right out in front of the house, in front of my driveway over there, there was one of these PVC pipes sticking up out there, that the mowers came along and mowed it down. I went out there and looked, and I heard running water in there. I checked with Chief Westbrook, is he still Wayman Westbrook?
He's no longer with us, but I...
At that time, he told me, says, "Yeah, you could've had a power plug there all along." Well, the ditchers came along to ditch the ditch out, and they severed the line about 20 foot on down from there, and put another connector, and they said, "Well, that's where you need to hook up to. That's your hookup, and this is your fire plug." Chief Westbrook said, "We don't have any to go around. We don't, we don't have enough fire plugs to go around." But, I'd been rated all them years and had to buy, I wasn't really happy about that certificate deal at all.
Right, no, that's not, that's...
And then, they came along, and then they said, "We're gonna put it on your insurance and all your outbuildings, and I'm paying $500 just to protect outbuildings now on my insurance." But, anyway, I still have a place for a fire plug out there. And I'm not hooking to county water. I have an excellent well. I have probably one of the best sources of water. I'm right over between Blue Hole, a spring, and that spring down there on Hinton Farm that boils out of the ground. I'm over an underground river, and it's excellent water. And I have it filtered. For a long time, I didn't even filter it, but I mean, it comes out of the ground cold, and it's filtered, and it's safe to drink.
Okay.
And I'm not letting no environmental people come and shut me down. Anybody can drink it, and it's good. Good water. I love, fresh water. Don't have none of this, you know...
You have, excuse me, let me, I'm sorry to keep this on task. Do you have any questions pertaining this?
No, that's, I just want to make that comment, because, see, I still need a fire plug. And, and I'm just as good to have one as any of these other ones.
Well, and to support what you're, what you're saying, it sounds like if it was PVC, it was a dry hydrant from years ago.
Yes.
And those have to be, they were put in at a certain time, they have to be inspected, they have to be on the record, and the county doesn't do that. It's generally private, and they've never been maintained. As far as I know, in the county, there's a lot of them that were in the Villanow area, and they were never maintained. Luckily, we got water and hydrants over there. But, the commissioner also put in, in the SPOST, if there's, if the projections are there with the, with the revenue from SPOST, we do have, we are looking at putting some fire hydrants in.
Yes.
And we're in the process of evaluating that type of installation, so not telling you today that it's gonna affect you in this cycle, but we are looking to make improvements.
I actually had some service people from the county department. I looked out one day in the truck parked out there, and they was out there walking all around my yard out there. I went out and said, "What's the problem? We looking for your fire hydrant. I mean, we looking for your water meter." I said, "I don't have one, I'm not connected, and if you saw the records, you know that."
Right. I understand. Thank you, though. Thank you.
Chief, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
So, we currently have a agreement with Whitfield County, correct?
Yes, sir.
And Catoosa County.
Yes, sir.
What about the other surrounding counties?
We have, so, when you get into Chautauqua, they are, we have agreements with their, with some of their, they're all independent community fire departments.
Right.
So, we do have agreements with West Amurchy and...
And one in Sabrina?
Yes, and Taloga, in the backside of, we just, we just actually ran a call with them the other day. West Brow is actually, West Brow actually, our Station 4 up on, in Hinkle, West Brow actually covers, their firefighters are actually our firefighters as well. That works out really well up there. New Salem comes into Daughtry Gap up on that end. Again, Whitfield County's been amazing. Actually, Whitfield County actually has two fire stations that are closer, can get to the Villanow area quicker than, than we get over the mountain and out there. So, that has worked out really well with that.
So, you're saying we have a agreement with all surrounding counties now?
Not all, not every, not every department that touches us yet. And we don't have one with the city of Lafayette and Rossville, but we're in communication with them.
Okay.
And talking about, and talking about those. And again, there's several things that go into it. It has to reciprocate fairly, you know, try to do it the same, where we're getting close to the number of firefighters and equipment.
Okay.
But, but yes, and we're, again, there are, a lot of those need to be updated. They're, they're, they've been around, and it needs to be more laid out like this one is, with legal taking, taking how in-depth this one is. Some of them are smaller and generic, based on the factors, the community fire department making an agreement, but they still count.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. And we'll go ahead and approve this agreement. This also has to be approved by the Board of Commissioners over in Catoosa County, so we'll execute our part here tonight. And our clerk will also attest this. There's a lot of attachments there of these roads, that's what all of that is. Okay, very well. Okay, item number three is our hospice proclamation for this month. By the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, a proclamation for Hospice Month, "Whereas hospice care providers, provides patients and their families with high-quality, compassionate end-of-life care, including pain and symptom management, caregiver training, as well as emotional and spiritual support. And whereas the hospice philosophy affirms the inherent dignity and worth of every individual and respect human life in all states. And whereas hospice care relies on a combined knowledge, skill, and compassion of a full team of professionals and volunteers, including physicians, nurses, nursing aides, social workers, and clergy, to help patients and their families cope with their bereavement. And whereas Hospice Month aims to increase awareness of the importance and availability of the hospice service by encouraging, support, and participation in associated hospice of Chattanooga, activities and programs throughout the year. And whereas Hospice of Chattanooga provides a vital service to the citizens of Walker County. Therefore, I, Shannon K. Whitfield, Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, to hereby proclaim November to be observed as Hospice Month in Walker County, and encourage all citizens to learn more about the hospice philosophy of care and service available in our community. Sign and seal the 19th day of November, 2020." Our friends with the hospice were not able to be here with us. This is something that we do with them every year for Hospice Month, and they had hoped to be here and had a last minute, had to change their plans, so we are thankful for what hospice does in our community, and how it takes care of our loved ones, and it does play a very, very important role in our community. role in our community. Okay, we've got item number four, this is a Resolution R 30-20, this is a resolution authorizing the filling of applications for the Georgia Department of Transportation and the United States Department of Transportation for a grant for public transportation assistance under Title 49 USC Section 5311. So I'm not going to read this whole thing, there's a lot of whereas and stuff in here, but basically at the bottom of page one, the real meat of this is, it says, "Therefore be it resolved by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County hereby referred to as the applicant that the designated official John Logan, Director of Grants and Public Transit, herein after referred to as official, is authorized to execute and file an application on the behalf of the applicant, a county government with the Georgia Department of Transportation, to aid in the financing of public transportation assistance pursuant to Section 5311 in the Federal Transit Act." So this basically is the document that allows our new director to be able to interact with the document exchange and applications with the state of Georgia and also with the Federal Transit Act. They need us to validate that John is our representative and he is our point person, so John has a dual role of both grants and the transit both, so this is one of the good tie-ins that we had combining those two roles at this time, because we do receive a lot of assistance from the public transit program. They pay, between the federal and state, they pay 90% of our cost of replacing our buses, and then they pay 50% of our daily operational expenses throughout the year. So it's a big partner, something the county's been doing for many years, and we want to continue this relationship, so since we've added John, we need to get him on the list of correspondences with that. So any questions or concerns about that? Okay, hearing that, I'll just sign this resolution into the record, so we can send our partners this document, so they'll know that this has been presented in a public meeting, and then we'll need our clerk to attest that. Okay, that adjourns our regular scheduled meeting. Appreciate everyone coming, we'll be back here on December the 10th at 6 o'clock, we hope everyone has a safe evening, and I hope everyone has a happy Thanksgiving celebration, and the county offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday both. So y'all have a good evening, and thank you, and we're adjourned.